And Tim Black. City Lord. So before the council meetings, we have this work session to discuss what we're going to discuss in the council meeting. It is on video, so it's available when you go on YouTube for that. We don't have minutes, but we do. It is a public meeting, open to the public. We typically don't, you know, take questions or anything from the public in here, but this is where we discuss everything that we're going to be discussing out on the floor.
Before you start, do we have an extra agenda that we could provide to them?
Yeah, they're out here.
Okay.
Thanks, Jan. So I'm the council president, so I lead the work sessions. And then you'll notice that once we go on the floor, the mayor will run the council meeting. So first up on the agenda were ordinance 95, which is the appropriations. We're just going to do that in the second read. So the plan right now is to have, since we're not having the finance meeting this week, we'll have an hour long before the December 14th meeting. The December 14th meeting was just going to be questions anyway, so we should have plenty of time to go over the operational budget plus questions. You should be able to, you know, maybe not today, but send Mr. Veras any questions you have, anything you want him to look up or speak to in the next finance meeting. And if Mr. Veras is unable to attend that finance meeting, we can, we'll still get through it. So next up is 97. This is to change the employee compensation schedule, basically with regards to the SRO. Want to talk about this?
Well, we only have one part-time SRO slated in the ordinance. And the idea was to find a full-time for the high school, part-time for the bletchoo. We haven't been able to find a full-time for the high school. Now, we have two people that applied for part-time, but I can't hire them both because we only have an ordinance for one. So we thought we'd change it to as needed because down the road, we don't know what's going to happen. I mean, eventually, I'd like to fulfill that full-time, but it kind of ties our hands when we have applicants that are in and it's like, well, we know we can't look at two of them. You know, we can interview two, they're both good, but...
But there's a key to this, too, that the chief hasn't mentioned yet, is that the schools fund the majority of that cost. So it's not even funded by us. They are funding a majority of that cost now because in the past, we kind of just did it. And after talks and negotiations with them, they felt that they should contribute to that, obviously, because it's a benefit to them and to the community. So they are funding probably about 90% of that, correct?
The high school MOU has been signed. The bletchoo MOU has not been signed yet, but people can't remove the staff. So, yeah.
So budgetarily, what I'm getting at is it's pretty neutral. There's not much of an impact at all.
So any further questions on that?
It depends. I mean, a month ago, we had a guy in there. They offered him a full-time spot back in town, which they created this spot for him, and it's like, oh, gosh. So then we had somebody who was interested in full-time. He was going to take our current test. He called last Thursday and said, no, we'll take where I'm at. It was like, we do have two part-time applicants. Yeah, I mean, I...
I guess I'm asking, are you asking us to do through?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
In the dynamic way change, we have potential, one guy in training right now that's thinking, yeah, I might want to take that assignment. He's going to be full-time. So this could mean something tomorrow, it could mean something two years from now. Because I want to keep that position filled.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's been hard enough to get that position filled, so we don't want to put any roadblocks. Maybe anything we could do to help the police department get it done. So let's do this one, two, three, please. All right. Next is the water tower cooler at City Hall. Do you want to talk about that?
This is part of the HBA system that's been failing for many years, and I'll kick it off and I'll hand it to Mr. Wilson. But that big monstrosity you see behind the fire department, it's been failing for quite some time, and it's been identified as something that's probably not going to make it very much longer. So again, like everything else we're doing with HVAC across the two buildings here, everything's kind of out of its life, so it needs replaced. And, you know, a lot of that has to do with, I know, with the firefighters, there's a couple of times where they had no air in the heat of the summer, and, you know, being rested and ready to go and living or being in a comfortable temperature is probably conducive to them. So it's very helpful to have that, and we don't want to make our employees not have that when we're trying to work. So, did I miss anything?
No, this is just that the company came to us and was basically like, you know, if you guys can lock this down as far as a promise to do it, and it's through a state bid, so it's not like we're getting some shady pricing or anything. But, you know, if we can get it through council, even if we need to wait a year or whatever, it would lock in the price. So you know how prices are going up. They would lock it in where it is with the quote they gave us. So that's the advantage to doing this now.
What was the?
$243,500.
Thank you.
How much?
$243,500.
And this is the same company?
HVAC is not cheap.
This is the same company that's doing the rec center, right?
Correct.
And I remember Dave was a fan of Wadsworth, or you were a fan of Omni? But it's through Omni, too. The purchasing program.
Do they have the intent of doing it this year if we pass on with the way the weather's?
Next year.
Yeah, probably like a year from now.
So this is basically just making an agreement to lock in the price, no hurry on having to pay for it?
Correct.
And this wasn't, was it something that was in the capital plan?
It was part of, I think it was part of the capital budget, because we knew this thing was failing. So, yeah, I was, I don't think we knew the exact cost of it.
Okay. Was it in the ballpark of $240?
Yeah, in the grand scheme. You know, we've got about, what, $3 million between the two buildings? So we knew it was going to be expensive.
Do we have a time limit on this? Did we miss the push-through? I mean, you know, is their offer only good this week?
No, I don't think it's like a rush if you want to do another reading. You know, I mean, it's up to you guys, obviously.
I have no problem with one, two, three. Does anyone else have any other ideas?
No, I think the sooner the better. It's off our...
Yeah, and it's not, it's not a promise to pay, it's a promise to... And we're not buying it tomorrow, we're not going to have to store it.
Yeah, I think, I talked to Veras about it. I mean, I think he was really looking at, like, paying actually like the beginning of '25.
Oh, there you go.
So doing the work like a year from now, next fall, and then by the time it's actually done, and he has it unslated for like the beginning of '25.
I agree. I'd like to get this one, two, three, just so we have it off our plate for 2024.
Absolutely.
So unless there's objections, all right, let's do that. The next is the demolitions of the buildings on Shepherd Road and Twinsburg Road. Mr. Rodick, do you want to speak to this?
I'll defer to Hoostigadetti.
Well, maybe I'll start this one, because this has been a problem for quite some time. These properties have been in complete disrepair. If I can put into perspective how many people have called about these properties, I'd venture to say it's probably weekly, that's how bad they are. You guys all know, if you drive down Shepherd Road, that one white house that's been buried forever, has been unoccupied, just in a complete total state of disrepair, like, it's dangerous. If someone was to go inside of there, it's absolutely dangerous. That's just one example. But we went through a long legal process, and he'll talk to that. But this took a long time to get to here today. I mean, I've started this work probably when I started my first term five years ago. So it's been a long haul to get to here today. But, you know, we've worked, we've gone through the legal processes, we've tried to work with the people that own the homes, and that's why we're here today, to say we're at that point.
There are three entrances that I had observed to the rear of that residence on South Shep, what I call South Shepherd Road, that you can enter that house at any time. That structure, I don't want to call it a house, it's a structure.
Yeah, to that point, from a formal perspective, it was kicked off with the building department, zoning inspector, and that was followed up on. We actually went and got administrative search warrants based on those kind of observations that you can clearly see even from the road. So municipal court issued search warrants. They were executed by Mr. Rodick. He drafted orders based on what he found in the search warrants, ordered the demolition of the properties. They were not, the issues weren't corrected, the properties were not demoed. That's why this came to, I think, three or four council meetings ago, you guys passed a motion to authorize the demolition notices, which Mr. Hoover sent out. Since it's been 30 days since those were delivered, the next step is for you to pass this ordinance if you so desire to actually authorize and require the demolition of those properties. Mr. Rodick is currently working on getting quotes for the demolition. I think he has one, and is looking to get at least one or two more.
Have we heard from either, since the...
Not that I know of.
...office first, have we heard from either one?
Not that I know of, but you would probably know better.
Have you heard from either owner?
Either owner. I've actually met twice with the owner of the property on East Twinsburg Road.
Okay.
And in both occasions, I explained to him the parameters that the code set, and I explained to him the dates that he would need to, if he wanted to appeal, that he had the opportunity to make an appeal. And we gave him the materials, the application. I told him, you know, file this, you can get it before the Board of Appeals if you want to extend, you know, the time limit or whatever you want to do. And he never responded to that. That's the one that is filled with hoarding type of materials. And I actually haven't heard from, his name is Mr. Bodnar, and I've not heard from him since.
So with that, and the information in here says you have 30 days from August 1st. We have the right because we've legally notified them. You don't demolish.
Well, so that was kind of the first bite at the apple. And there's been several others since then, and just no action's been taken. And the buildings are dangerous, they've been designated as dangerous buildings.
And I'm saying, we've done all the legal notifications, and it's been since August.
Right.
So I think it's time to proceed.
Yep, absolutely. Definitely.
You don't know what other animals exist.
And the other aspect of it, the cost of the demolition, the cost of serving the notices, those will eventually be certified by Mr. Hoover to the county for placement on the tax duplicate for the respective property. So theoretically, at some point, time will recoup it, whether it's through the payment of property taxes or when the house sells.
Do you have a timeline on when you're looking to do the demo, so maybe you can pass it? Like, next year, the spring, right away?
I'm thinking that that would probably happen as quickly as possible.
Okay. But keeping in mind that these are dangerous, this is not, if you go by these properties, you shouldn't pull in there because I don't think you're allowed to.
Right.
They're dangerous. And the people next door to that, you know, if a kid wanders in there, I mean, they could collapse. That's really where we're at.
So we're urgently looking.
And they're fire hazards, too, by the way. We didn't even mention that.
I think one doesn't even have a floor. If you walked in, isn't it missing flooring and some stuff?
The one on Shepherd Road is missing sections of flooring. Yeah, you have to be very careful walking through that. I've cautioned the contractors to just be, you know, err on the side of caution, look as far as you can in there, but it really was, it's kind of risky walking through the building.
After you demolish, they still own the property? Okay.
Yeah, we're not moving, there's a process to take the property as well, but we're not pursuing that at this stage.
But that may happen if they don't pay the taxes.
It's not our attempt. We don't want to acquire the properties, we want to make the property safe.
No, but I'm saying, they own it, they don't pay their taxes. It goes a different direction.
There was somebody interested in the property on South Shepherd. The person that was looking at that did not want to have to pay for the demolition, otherwise it would have been sold. So there's a good chance that it will be sold quicker, sooner than later.
All right, so with all that being said, I would like to do, I propose to do one, two, three on this, so we can get the safety secured.
Exactly.
All right, and then finally, the Park Avenue home purchase. Mayor, would you like to talk about this?
I would. So in keeping with what we're working on with purchasing the property across the street, again, I'm doing what was asked in 2016 from the Future Growth Committee. This is another piece of that. We're moving towards acquiring the properties. I was approached by the property owner, who's here tonight if you have questions for this gentleman. But we did an appraisal on it, it came in at $162.500. We agreed at a price of $160,000. So we're getting it for less than it's actually worth, if you guys agree to that. But again, this is another big piece of what is in here, and I'm just continuing on that. I've told you from the beginning, it's going to be a long process, it's going to be slow, but this is another step in that direction. And this is the corner property, which we already own the top portion of that anyway. So it kind of makes sense to start moving that way down. And in this process, the gentleman, I believe next door, had gotten wind of it, and he's looking to talk to us, too. I have not approached any property over there, not forcing anyone out of their home, that's not what we're doing. All we're doing is, you know, if someone's approaching us, we'll have a conversation.
Are we interested in an AN-82? There's a piece of property for sale. The house, ironically, next to it was purchased by an ex-politician at the same time we purchased land behind it. Someone, and are we also going to go after that piece of property that's for sale? An-82, or are we only going on the park?
Those are in there, but at this point right now, like I said, all I'm doing is, if they're coming to us, we're going to talk about it, and I think this is another step in that direction. Those, at this point, are not really critical in the grand scheme, but if you look through this book again, and I just got today, and thank you, Mr. Hoover, I think you were on this one, weren't you, in 1998?
No. I've never been on the...
I thought your name was in here.
You were on council.
You were on council, I'm sorry.
Which person did you find it with?
But I have never seen this, so...
Oh, okay.
But it even talks about it in there.
He couldn't find it, he was, we were in here talking, trying to find it.
But even in 1997, it kind of shows a map, the one page I pulled out today and looked at, it kind of showed that whole thing there. So here again, I'm working on what we've been talking about forever. And, you know, my goal would be in the next four years to get this thing really moving forward.
Say out loud for the video, what those are, if you're just holding them up.
Future Growth Committee committees.
It's a future growth committee plans.
Well, maybe we could then go back and do the rec center one.
So I have a question.
I got slammed.
Assuming we go through with purchasing this, because of the amount of time that it's going to take before the other ones might fall into line, what do you envision us doing with the house that's on the property?
We would demolish it. So that's a great question, that was my next step. This is the Summit County Land Bank, there's grants for that. It's very likely we can get them to do that. This is a little longer process, but if I get Summit County Land Bank to take the house down, it costs us nothing to do that. And we'll go through that process, and I think, I think we could be successful.
You're not suggesting we maintain the house while we try to purchase?
No, I don't want to be a landlord.
Yeah, we don't need to be.
No, that's not what we're after here.
That's sad. Because when we originally had talked about doing that with Park, we talked about, why don't we be like Glenwell, where they kept their old houses and they reintroduced them into small businesses and that? So have we considered that at all again? Or are we now going to buy every house as it comes up?
It doesn't fit the plan proposed. That's not what they're proposing. They're talking about a mixed use in here that...
That was a proposal, that doesn't mean it's...
But let me point one thing out to you, too, is that prior to me in this role, we have acquired four of the properties in that area. So I'm not the first one to do this. So this has been going on for quite some time.
To be honest, Jan, it's not out of the question, and that's a good point that you bring up, that, you know, but we don't need to keep everyone and make it a house, you know? If you are going to do something like that, you do need parking on either side and whatnot. So that's not out of the question, I would say, but we still need to purchase them all. But one would suggest, one would think you need the right type of building to be able to turn it into. I don't know that any of those homes are ground floor, so then, so then you have to work on the accessibility of all.
Glenwell has, well, Meredith's best friend lived in one of them.
Yeah.
And they sold it to another family. Glenwell's aren't one floor either.
Right. But it's not out of the question, Jan, and that's something to keep in mind as we offer the ability...
Let's see some of the history, since we didn't keep the high school.
Keep in mind, in Glenwell, so that was all historic, because we're all part of...
Austin Power.
Austin Power.
They were, what are they, company?
They were company homes.
This is a part of, yes.
Yeah, all company homes.
Mr. Black, do you know the year of that home?
1908.
1908?
1908.
It's a secondary home.
Yeah.
I would echo that, too. There's, on that street, there's probably a better selection to keep one that still has the slate roof. That was the original, that was, that was the first subdivision in the city of Macedonia in 1908. But there's, I think there's, going on what Jan said, there's, I think there's a better selection in there that would be better to keep historically in that area.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not against that suggestion at all, and I, and I would like to, you know, put it to you, as part of the Future Growth Committee from 2016, to consider the possibility of saving one or two of those homes to use in the mixed use, you know? We don't have to pave paradise and make it a parking lot, right? So we can, we can keep some of those homes, turn them into part of the master plan of this.
Yeah, it doesn't need more traffic.
The big piece is the financials of this, so you're all aware. When we went through our finance meeting last time, Mr. Veras alluded to our interest-bearing account, which, you know, there were some dollars that were earned there, I think in excess of $800,000. That's where we're going to pull from, so it's not necessarily coming from any other fund. It's more of a, I guess, a windfall from that interest-bearing account that we have that we talked about. So it's really, again, budget neutral for us at this point, so it's not going to affect us. But it's moving in that direction, and some of you all know, too, I've been working with some developers and talking with them about this property, because the more we acquire, remember, the thing I want with this is control of what's going to go in there, because you all hear the same thing that I do. People do not want, you know, the fast food restaurants. If we have control, that we can, we can kind of dictate what's going to go in there. So that's, that's a big piece of what we have, and this is not a loser. If at some point we don't want the property, we could still sell it. So really, in terms of the community and the city, we're not at a loss here.
The national park system also took a lot of their buildings and made them multi-use areas.
Peninsula?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's, that is a good suggestion, and thank you, Mr. Black, for your suggestion that that's not the right house to do with, but it's a good starting point to, as our whole plan comes to... How many houses are on there? 12, 10?
I don't know the count. That's a great question.
Nobody here knows?
In my mind, I would think...
I thought there was six.
Six or seven?
Seven, it's supposed to be seven, okay.
Number four of those, there was a proposed driveway, and it kind of, it's grass right now, we maintain that. But there's a proposed driveway that would go through there, that's why they acquired those in the past. I mean, we could put a driveway there now, but it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense.
Do you have any more questions about this? Would you guys like to hold this at one, just so we can get some more community inputs, or are you satisfied?
Well, I think one would help let the committee come back, or anyone else give feedback, if you do one first reading, you get some community feedback.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to community feedback on this.
Never want to look like we're rushed or something.
And so, no further?
Is this going to delay it? I mean, I don't think you guys have any Thanksgiving...
Correct, so our next meeting will be December 14.
So it'll push us past the first of the year by the time the title work is done and everything, so, but I'm okay.
Is there, is there a time limit on the appraisal or anything like that?
No.
Appraisal's good.
Yeah, appraisal's good, at least six months, I would say. It just, I won't take the next step of drafting the purchase agreement, and really, the bigger thing is getting the title company to do the title work, because that's going to take a couple of weeks. We had discussed maybe having the purchase agreement with a closing date of December 31st to make taxes a little bit cleaner, but, you know, if we wait...
Well, we can consider, you know, we can consider two and three on the next meeting.
Yeah, we have time.
Yeah, the title work won't get done.
We do first, and then you can see if we get any feedback between now and the next meeting. You can still have the title for the end of the year, because if we pass it, it'll be before the end of the year.
They won't have enough time to do the title work.
No.
It'll take at least three weeks after title work done.
But if the owner is an agreement, who happens to be sitting here, sampah, do you see he's sampah?
It doesn't make the title company work any faster.
No, but if the, if the owner agrees to it...
It doesn't make the...
It becomes ours. It doesn't make it go faster, but it still becomes ours.
We're not going to transfer title without the title work, so... Did you get an email?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I've talked to, he's going to come talk to council. Or he's going to come to you, probably. But, on that note, Mark, can you give us a quick synopsis what it means for the city with the passage of issue two?
Yes.
What has the city been looking at, having to consider?
Yes, I'll try to be as brief as possible. So issue two passed, the effective date is December 7, 30 days after passage. They already created the revised code chapter, I think it's 3780. It's approximately, like, it's like 62 pages or something. I went through it today, and it gives basically a deadline of nine months for the Department of Commerce to develop this cannabis control division. They have, within that same period of time, to develop rules and regulations, and also start issuing licenses nine months from the effective date. So we probably really won't see any, you know, cannabis being sold or license issued and people selling at medical marijuana facilities, because they kind of piggyback off the medical marijuana code. So it's going to be some time, but right now, with, with the chief and the mayor, we're going to look at the local ordinances as far as drug use, possession, control. We'll probably have to make some adjustments there to align with the new permissions, which is primarily possession, use, transport of up to 2.5 ounces of marijuana. You can home grow six plants, up to 12 if there's two adults over 21. So we'll have to adjust our local code for that. And then down the road, we can look at maybe passing local regulations to further control it.
Well, the one residence, I don't know if...
Yeah, we all got the same.
The factor that can we, and it does say today in the paper, we can't impose taxes, but we can prohibit adult-use dispensaries in the communities, which sounds similar to me, like the alcohol law, where you can say no, which means you couldn't open a bar because you have, well, you could, but you wouldn't have any alcohol.
Similar to medical marijuana went in through, you guys did a moratorium initially, and then ultimately determined, you don't need a moratorium, and you authorize distribution, cultivation, and processing. The same thing's true here. It says right in the new code section that you can outright prohibit it. It's a little bit different than medical marijuana, because there, we could charge local licensing fees. This specifically says we can't do that, so we aren't going to have that financial incentive to, you know, have a local licensing scheme, so it's a little bit different that way. That's the main highlights, I guess, for now. The General Assembly, since it's not a constitutional provision, they can come through and make some changes. I saw this afternoon, they indicated they were looking at making some adjustments, I think most notably to the THC level, which right now, the new chapter mandates be around 90 percent, or minimum of 90 percent or higher. They want to lower that, they say that's the highest out of the 23 other states that have legalized it. And I think they also want to make some adjustments regarding advertising concerning recreational marijuana, put some restrictions on it, you know, kind of stuff. They don't want to market gummies to kids under, those under 21. So those type of restrictions will probably be changed, but I haven't seen anything right[1618.48] probably be changed, but I haven't seen anything right now that says the general assembly's going to totally do away with it.
Like you said, it's a statutory law. It's not a constitutional amendment, but it's a general law?
It is.
Okay. And we can't prohibit the aspects of that law that allow in-home growing, right? Just dispensaries potentially?
So it's a home rule analysis and if you want me to look, if you're interested in potentially regulating it like that.
No, no, I'm just asking, just asking high level. I think that, I'm, I'm assuming that.
Well, we exercised some of that authority with medical. So we, there may be some areas we can do it with recreational, but I'd have to go through the analysis.
Oh, no, I'm not asking you to.
And just to be clear, we've already been approached. I think I have a meeting next week for one of them wanting to put a dispensary in town. So ultimately it comes to you guys. I mean, talk's cheap when we talk about it, but ultimately it's up to you guys how we handle that. And I know we're going to be very careful. So, you know, if you feel a moratorium's in order, that's up to you guys to, to put that in place, but they're already chopping at the pit.
But under the current ordinances, they have to comply, right, for a.
I don't think we.
We don't, we don't regulate recreational. Right now, recreational is unlawful under our local code, which we'll have to adjust or else.
But that changes in 30 days, right?
Correct. So the next meeting, I'm probably going to have some legislation after talking to the mayor and the chief, proposing some adjustments to the code. I've already kind of created a summary of the code sections I think we need to take a look at, but expect to see that in the December meeting.
Okay.
We can do similar to what we did with the adult stores. Remember, I don't think any of us.
No, no, I don't think any of us.
We, it's allowed, but there's only certain places that we allow.
That's already in here.
Right.
So there's 500-foot restrictions for schools, churches, libraries, parks, that kind of thing.
And we need that up at the top for here.
I can grow.
You guys can check out 797 in the classified ordinance.
I was looking at it.
Yeah. And if you have, look at the plan B for the Paco Viva. It had a real good.
Welcome to the November 7th on here. November 9th council meeting. It is 7:30 to 2:00 PM. Will Mr. Hoover please call the roll?
Ms. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Finley?
Here.
Mr. Gravis?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Here.
Now I ask Mr. O'Brien to lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
For the evening, I'm going to do just something a little different, Your Honor. It's okay. On the cusp of Veterans Day, I take great pleasure in standing before the members of City Council, our mayor, department heads and fellow veterans. Veterans Day provides us with a moment of profound significance that reminds us of the courage, sacrifice and unwavering commitment of our nation's veterans. This day serves as a solemn reminder of the countless heroes who have dedicated their lives to defending the freedoms we hold dear. As we gather for this evening's meeting, it is our duty and privilege to pay tribute to these brave men and women who have served our country with honor and distinction, upholding the values and ideals that make our nation great. On this Veterans Day, let us come together not only to express our gratitude to those who have served, but also to reflect on the lessons we can glean from their experiences. By understanding the sacrifices and resilience of our veterans, we can better understand the importance of unity, perseverance and service in our own lives. Together, we can ensure that the legacy of our veterans lives on, inspiring us to be responsible, compassionate, patriotic citizens, dedicated to making our nation a better place for all. Thank you for joining us in this special commemoration this evening and may we continue to honor and support our veterans in every way. Thank you. And now, please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
We don't normally do these, but this is kind of what they deal with us for these types of promotions. So we thought that it was appropriate that we go to the office of these gentlemen today for you all to see. And I used to have a crowd here, so I'm probably a little nervous up here because usually it's, you know, nothing. So thank you for coming. It's awesome. Happy.
Feel legal.
Yeah. Raise your hand, please. Who'd be happy to meet. I, Daniel Motica.
Hi, Daniel Motica.
Do solemnly swear in a firm.
Do solemnly swear in a firm.
But I shall uphold and support.
I shall uphold and support.
In word and spirit.
In word and spirit.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
All laws of federal and state.
All laws of federal and state.
The charter, ordinances and resolutions.
Charter, orders and resolutions.
Of the City of Macedonia.
The City of Macedonia.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the Macedonia Police Department.
The Macedonia Police Department.
And that I shall faithfully.
And that I shall faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge my duties as.
Discharge my duties as.
The City of Macedonia full-time police sergeant.
The City of Macedonia full-time police sergeant.
During my term of office as I shall answer to God.
During my term of office as I shall answer to God.
Congratulations. You've got to give a speech. I mean, you're not getting out of it. You know how this works.
At least seven minutes, but less than two. I'm going to do it quickly because I know we've got such important things to do. I'd just like to thank my family. My wife couldn't be here tonight. She worked in, she's a corrections officer. So unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight. We, we're short staffed. So everybody that I work with, my fellow employees. But yeah, everybody that's helped me get to here and just appreciate all this support.
Can you introduce your family?
We'll start with my daughter. This is Ada. She's probably going to be super shy right now.
I'm sorry about that.
This is my mother, Far, and my father, Mike.
Don't bang her.
That was a bad trying. Little, little accident, I hope. But I appreciate it.
It wasn't me.
My pleasure.
Mr. Fitz. Raise your hand if you have to meet. Hi, Brian Fitz.
Hi, Brian Fitz.
Do solemnly swear in a firm.
Do solemnly swear in a firm.
That I shall uphold and support.
That I shall uphold and support.
In word and spirit.
In word and spirit.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
All laws of federal and state.
All laws of federal and state.
The charter, ordinances and resolutions.
Charter, orders and resolutions.
Of the City of Macedonia.
The City of Macedonia.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the Macedonia Police Department.
Of the Macedonia Police Department.
And I shall faithfully.
And I shall faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
Impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge my duties as.
Discharge my duties as.
The City of Macedonia full-time police sergeant.
The City of Macedonia full-time police sergeant.
During my term of office as I shall answer to God.
During my term of office as I shall answer to God.
Congratulations.
That's my dad, Al. He has a hearing. He's, he talks a lot. I'd like to thank Mayor Melmar, Chief Dr. Bogovic, Council. I love Megan, my son Ashton, my daughter Audrey is looking at the ground. My son Jackson, my mom Glenn, my dad Dennis, my daughter Marissa and her boyfriend Harry. And my cousin Mike's here. Thank everybody for showing up. I'd like to thank, the reason Dan said coworkers or was, coworkers, I called them my employees last week, which was kind of funny until they started asking me for raises, which. So I'm going to say thank you to my coworkers and friends who showed up. If you need anything with raises, talk to this man right here. Thanks.
Raise your hand, if you have to meet. Hi, Travis Connor.
Hi, Travis Connor.
Do solemnly swear in a firm.
Do solemnly swear in a firm.
That I shall uphold and support.
That I shall uphold and support.
In word and spirit.
In word and spirit.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
All laws of federal and state.
All laws of federal and state.
The charter, ordinances and resolutions.
Charter, ordinances and resolutions.
Of the City of Macedonia.
The City of Macedonia.
And the rules and regulations.
And the rules and regulations.
Of the Macedonia Police Department.
The Macedonia Police Department.
And that I shall faithfully.
And that I shall faithfully.
Honestly and impartially.
Honestly and impartially.
Discharge my duties as.
Discharge my duties as.
City of Macedonia full-time police officer.
City of Macedonia full-time police officer.
During my term of office as I shall answer to God.
During my term of office.
As I shall answer to God.
As I shall answer to God.
Congratulations. You don't get out of the speech either, so.
No. Well, you know, past workers at Akron, so it's nice to come here, get a fresh start. So four, four weeks in, been great with everyone that's been training, taking the time to coach me on how things are down here. So decided for the final two weeks here and get a fresh start and go to the city, I guess.
We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, I don't know, I can't talk to anybody, but you know, I'm so happy for Brian and Dan. I mean, you guys have been with us so long. There's a lot of great people in our organization, but you guys certainly earned your promotions. And I look forward to working with you guys in this new position. Travis, I mean, he comes to us with a lot of experience and I mean, as FTOs have just had nothing but good things to say about them. They're all, it's going to be a good addition to this department. So I thank you guys.
If the family wants to stay for the council meeting, you can, but generally they don't. So.
It's a mess.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Happy Veterans Day.
For the sake of the sound, I'm going to have the door shut. So one second, please. All our viewers at home want to hear us clearly. I'm sure there's hundreds of them.
All of our viewers.
Thanks, chief.
No, I'm not watching right now, so.
Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, October 26, 2023 regular council meeting.
Second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
All right, next up is public comments. We have two people on the list. If you can come to the microphone here, we ask you to keep it to five minutes. Chief, I'll ask you to keep the time, five minutes or less. State your name and your address, please. And the first one on our list is Ellen Bertel.
Hi, my name is Ellen Bertel, 319 West Highland Road, Northfield Center. I'm here in regards to something that came to my attention a couple of weeks ago when we went to a museum meeting. It's called America 250. Is anybody here in the room familiar with this? Okay. America 250. We are planning a huge celebration for the 250th anniversary of the signing of the declaration. And it's going to be a year-long celebration starting in January of 2026 and going every month through the entire year. And they want everybody in the entire state, all the communities involved if possible. They, I asked for five pamphlets. They only gave me one. So I made a photocopy. It can be something as simple as a tree planting or something grant like a festival, anything in between. There will be grants available. Most of them will be in a dollar amount of about $5,000. There are a few $50,000 grants available for this. So, you know, whatever you want to do. I have the information. Is there anyone here from Parks and Recreation?
Right behind you.
Right behind you.
The guy in white.
Right behind you.
There you go.
That does sound like a job for Sam Edgar.
It sounds like an Edgar job to me.
The only spoiler alert I have on this is the very first month of 2026. Because it's the first month, they're going to be celebrating Ohio's firsts. Obviously Wapakoneta's going to be doing Neil Armstrong, first man on the moon. Cleveland, first traffic lights. Now we have the Wright Brothers on a date. Other than that, that's all I really know at this time. There's a lot of information in that pamphlet. You can go to the website, which is America 250. It's America 250-Ohio.org and it'll give you all the information you need on the grants and what they're looking for, for festivals or any type of gathering. I just wanted to bring this to your attention so that when 2020 comes around, you don't say, well, we'll be told us about it. So if you want to do something on your own or get together with the other three communities and do something bigger, it might be nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mike Hawkins. I live at 9179 Briarwood at the end there. Most of you know me. And I don't usually come to these meetings and I don't usually ask the city for much. I take care of myself pretty good, you know, or in the street. I take care of our neighbors and stuff like that. The only reason I'm here tonight is with this past election a couple of days ago, I wasn't real happy with some of the issues that passed, especially issue two. I'm not a marijuana fan. And I wrote an email to council and the mayor this morning asking if you would please consider to prohibit either dispensaries or growing facilities from coming to our community. I just don't think it's a good fit. I tried to do some research on it. There's not a lot of good data, you know, starting from Colorado, I think being the first state to legalize it for recreational purposes. The data is just kind of here and there and, you know, when you start reading through it, it doesn't really, it doesn't really mean much, I guess, you know? But the common denominator I did see is they like to put a lot of these recreational dispensaries in the lower-income neighborhoods because I guess that's what a lot of the customers are, is in relation to the crime rate. They say break-ins normally, like car break-ins go up about 15%. Car accidents go up a lot because of delayed reaction times and that. So I love this city. I've been here since 1986. I've been in my current address for 30, going on 32 years now. I like to call it home. I just don't think, I, you know, I don't think it's a good fit for the city. I don't think we need something like this drawing people in. There's already medical dispensaries. People can get marijuana if they really wanted it. I can't do anything about them legalizing it. Obviously the people voted on that. But I, I'm not a gambler. I've never been to the MGM up here. Between that, marijuana, and if you get the ice shanties in Hudson, I think we could do the Wapping Tall remake. So that's all I'm asking you to please consider. Dave did answer me and said that he thought that our growing facility had been blocked.
Yeah, we discussed it in our caucus about what we had and asked.
Yeah, so maybe we're on the right track or something like that. Not like words of Cleveland Heights or somebody having this stuff. It just doesn't belong here. So I just asked it for some consideration that you would do that. You know, it's a good city nice. It's, it's great the way it is. You guys have been doing a good job. Police, fire and service departments, I think, do a wonderful job, especially with the small-sized departments they have. So I haven't had it on my street in years. When I first moved here, I used to plow up my ATV because we get heavy snow and we didn't get plowed till the next day or whatever. And I expected that. It was fine. Whatever they've done the last number of years, the snow flight doesn't stand a chance anymore. So I've been very happy with the service and that. So I, I don't usually come here to complain or ask much, but that's, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. Just to be clear too, we did, I think I was on council and we, we put some regulations through for the processing and cultivation facilities. through for the processing and cultivation facilities. The one thing I remember from that is they had to be pretty far away from churches and schools and such, but there were some nice tax incentives that came along with that for just those two types. Now, the one thing we did not allow for, and this is only under the medicinal umbrella, we didn't allow for the storefronts. So we just talked about it in our, in our work session because I knew this would be a topic of conversation. We may put a moratorium on it. I asked council to consider that probably in the next meeting, but our law director's reading through all the, the 62-page manual that came out, which is obviously gonna change, we know that. So there's gonna be more to come on that, but as of right now, nothing's happening. I have been approached by a business. I think we're meeting with them next week just to talk about it, but that's just talk.
Moratorium might be a good idea, if you use, you know, a temporary hold, just so you can kinda get a handle on what's going on.
And that's what we did last time, so we had that moratorium. And, you know, we're gonna take our time, and, you know, I want council to make a good educated decision on what they would like to see moving forward. So there's gonna be more to come on that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next up is correspondence from the clerk.
None, sir.
I'll move into pending our new legislation, starting with ordinance number 95.
Yes, I move to offer ordinance number 95-2023 for its second reading by title only.
Norton's providing for the 2024 annual appropriations for the City of Macedonia, Ohio.
This ordinance is essentially for our 2024 budget. We go through three reads for this every time, and we will have our final read hopefully in our first meeting in December, first and only meeting in December, and at that point, hopefully pass the budget for 2024. And next up is ordinance number 97.
Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 97-2023 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance establishing the current compensation schedule for the non-union employees of the City of Macedonia, Ohio.
Chief Yakapovich, or Director Gedetti, whichever.
If, just give us options. This is specifically near for the SRO. It was, the ordinance prep that was passed previously had one, because the idea was have a full-time position, a little part-time alternative. That full-time position has been difficult to fill. We have some people interested in part-time. This will give us options. It could be an option next week, could be an option six months, or two years from now. It just gives us options.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance 97-2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 97 carries. Ordinance number 98.
I move to offer ordinance number 98-2023 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Wadsworth Solutions for the purchase and installation of a new water tower at Macedonia City Hall through the Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to replace the cooling towers that are on the roof of City Hall. This is part of a larger project of all the HVAC systems that we've replaced within all of City Hall and the rec center. We've put a lot of money towards this, but this would specifically, the advantage of doing this would specifically lock the price in. And even though we may not do it until the end of '24, beginning of '25, maybe is when we're looking at payment. Veris could speak deeper to that, but he's not here this evening, but this would lock us in with the price we're at on that. So I ask that you consider that and pass this legislation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
I move to adopt ordinance number 98-2023 and post the same according to law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 98 carries. Ordinance number 99.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 99-2023 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
An ordinance ordering the demolition of dangerous buildings located at 8334 Shepherd Road and 1250 Twinsburg Road in the City of Macedonia, Ohio, and causing the cost of demolition to be certified for placement on their respective tax duplicates.
So essentially, this ordinance is some properties in town that have been dilapidated for quite some time. I had mentioned in our work session that I get calls quite often, and there's, there's a few other properties, but these two specifically that are in complete disrepair, they're uninhabited, they're dangerous, and it's at a point where we believe it's time to demolish these buildings. So Mr. Gedetti, anything you want to add to that?
No, nothing beyond what we discussed in work session. Like you said, we followed the statutory process, and this is really the end of that process.
Commissioner Erodek, anything you want to add?
Just that these, these are nuisance properties, and I do think they are a threat to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. They truly do need to be demolished.
And I want to also add that, again, we get a lot of calls from people that live in and around these properties, and, and their frustrations. And I believe I started working on these about five years ago. If you look at the legalities to get to where we're at today, that's how long it took to get here. There's a lot of hoops we had to jump through, but we hear you, and that's why we're here today for a vote. Any further discussion? Hearing none, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I hope that we pass and post according to law, ordinance number 99-2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 99 carries. Ordinance number 100.
Mayor, I offer ordinance 100-2023 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase the real property located at 8481 Park Avenue in the City of Macedonia.
So essentially, this ordinance is for the property at the top of Park Avenue, part of the future growth. It's something I'm gonna be working on, and you'll hear a lot more coming from me in the next couple of years about this. So it's something that I want to take what they put together in 2016 and really put it into fruition. So you're gonna hear a lot about it coming forward, and this is another step in that direction. And there'll be more, more conversations around this coming very soon. Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Hearing none, I'll move into the mayor's report. First and foremost, I want to, I want to say that Director Veris isn't here tonight. He had a tragic loss in his family, and I hope you can keep him in your, your thoughts and prayers. On the brighter note, TJ Maxx is open. I believe they open up on Sunday. I drove by the parking lot there. Oh, my goodness, that place is nuts, and I want nothing to do with it, but if you want to go check it out, please, by all means, do that. Crumble-
You said they did have a good experience there. Don't knock it. The lines are moving, sales are had.
I, I'll, I'll add that my wife came home with a couple bags from there, so I, you know. Happy wife, happy life. That's what I'll say about that. Crumble Cookie, this is one I'm excited about, will open up on November 17. I talk about this a lot, and our, our younger ladies here, I'm sure, are excited for that because I am, and they are some darn good cookies. So check them out. I want to touch on the Shop With A Cop. We have a gentleman that lives, he's actually in Twinsburg. It's on the border of Macedonia, and he does a lot to donate $500 every year. He's an avid car guy. If you didn't know, I love cars, so we kinda get along. And he created this, it's an old Dodge Coronet. It was actually a cop car. It has all the lights on it from, you know, I think it's a 68, I believe, Chief, was it? And he dropped a Hellcat motor. I won't get into all the crazy car guy details, but man, is it cool. But he goes on a hot rod power tour every year, and he has these little fake tickets he gives out. And when he gives a ticket for someone gawking at the car, they happily give him some money that he donates to us for our Shop With A Cop. So Shop With A Cop goes for some unfortunate or less fortunate children in our community. You know, they take them to the store and get them gifts and things like that. So pretty awesome stuff that he does that, and we, you know, we had the pleasure of taking him to lunch the other day to thank him, because he's done this for, what, the past four years, I believe, if not more? I mean, $500 donation's really, really nice. So it's awesome to have a gentleman like that in our community that, that thinks about these types of things. Very important thing, Veterans' Day is Saturday, November 11. Please honor our military veterans. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for them. I want to congratulate counselors Finley and Garvis on your hard-fought win, and-
You as well.
Thank you. I, I was stressing really hard over that evening, and, but no, in all seriousness, you know, we, we have a great team here. We work together. And I say team, and people don't like when I say that, but, you know, we disagree, but we're all pointing in the same direction. We want Macedonia to be the best it could be. So don't think when I say team, we're all like, yeah, we're all gonna agree on everything because we know we don't, right?
Sure.
And, and I love the fact that, you know, we're gonna be here, and we're gonna continue our work, and I think it's a testament to some of the things we, we have accomplished, not I, we have accomplished. So thank you for, for all of that. I also want to point out, we have our junior council here today, and girls, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Mrs. Dean, I'd like you to introduce our young ladies today, if you could, up at the microphone. You guys don't have to speak, she's gonna introduce you. But I, we have some new young ladies. We have five young ladies this year. I'm very excited to have them, and Mrs. Dean will talk a little bit about that. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine. I talk all day, so. Hi, Mrs. Dean, Heather Dean, from the high school. And we have five young ladies this year that have expressed interest in the Junior City Council Club. A number of them are on the band trip. There's band competition, choir competition, and we have two young ladies here tonight, Olivia Tidmore and Noah Walton, and they're just, they're great. I have Noah in class. I have Olivia with lunch duty. She's part of my 320 student lunch, so I get to see her every day. But they're wonderful. They just have an interest in learning about government. I teach government. Unfortunately, you don't. Teach a lot about local government. The state is focused on the federal and the state government. So this gives them an opportunity to learn about what you do, because I tell them, your decisions probably impact them more than the federal government and what the state is doing. So thank you for inviting us in. Mrs. Tidmore's back there, and her son-
It's good to see you, we're juniors.
Okay, so hopefully he'll get involved. But thank you. Thank you very much for having us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And that, and that was the whole goal of what we did, you know? We want, we want the, the young folks to understand how this works. And I think you young ladies have gotten a little insight to it. They do come to City Hall. We do it about three times a year. How was your first one? Did you like it? Did you enjoy it? Did you learn from it? And they, they did the service department tour, so they got a feel, and we talked about equipment and the cost of the equipment, and I think it was kinda eye-opening for them to understand. It's very complex what we do. It's not just as simple when you complain about, hey, my road's not salted. What, where the heck is the service department? I think you guys got a little perspective, and I wish some of the adults in our community would see what I, what we did, because I think they would get a better feel for why sometimes we fall behind. But the equipment we use and the things we do are very expensive, and, you know, the folks that work for the city work very hard to keep us safe and keep our roads clear, and, you know, all the little things we do in our service department. So I think the next tour, we're gonna do police, and then we'll do the fire department, and we'll talk about other things. But thank you, ladies, for coming today. I love having you here, and come as often as you'd like. Okay, moving on to committee reports.
Great.
I'm sorry, I forgot my most important thing.
Come on.
Don't drive distracted. Put the phones down and drive the car. And by the way, it's law now. Don't do it.
You get distracted and forgot to say that.
Yeah, I was distracted. I was all excited because our ladies came today, you know?
Your phone's not on.
I have two things, Mayor, under committee reports, if you would.
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to let the public know that there'll be a Joint Economic Development District meeting on November 30 at 6:00 PM. It's a public meeting. It will be in this room. Second of all, our next finance committee meeting will be Thursday, December 14. Time to be determined once we get an agenda set, and that, that time, our council president, Ms. Brandt, will set the times on all of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec Commission, we decided to cancel our November meeting because there are, it's the, the sports awards banquet for the schools that, that Wednesday, and a lot of our parents or people on our group are part of that. So we are not gonna have a November or December meeting, but we will come raring to go in January with a good report about winter. And that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into department reports, starting with Director Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thanks, council, for approving tonight's legislation and for always working with the service department so well and supporting us. I really appreciate it. Christmas lights, we are kinda buried in Christmas lights. Imagine being all wrapped up, trying to figure out which ones work and which ones don't, like that at your house times a million. And, but we're doing well. 82 and Commons is complete. That's, I was told, should be complete tomorrow, and they're still working on Longwood. Goal, obviously, December 2. And we'll get there. Leaves, leaf season's going really well, except, I guess, for Chief Yakapovich's house. We, we just skip it.
It's okay.
Just a thing we do. We, we've collected 121 loads of leaves, which equates to 3,495 yards of leaves, and we just continue. I'm sure that number is higher at this moment. So we are working, basically, if it's daylight, we're working, just because the weather's been great. It really has been fantastic. We, I'll come.
Except that one day it randomly snowed three inches.
Yeah, there was that.
Maybe on your side of town.
They still, they still picked up our leaves that day. They took not only the leaves, but the snow off our grass. It was great.
Yeah, we were still sucking leaves.
That's right. You were still doing it.
Even when it snowed, and there was snow right on, on top of the leaves, like you said. I mean, that, you know, we do have to send an apology out just for the fact that we weren't on top of that snow like I wish we would have been. We probably didn't get to your house soon.
You know what? They came down our street. I, I put most of mine in my woods, but I did have a little pile just from the front yard there, and I was surprised, I guess, because they, they're kicking it to break it loose.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, it's, it's really the same trucks that, that pick up leaves, or the same trucks that plow snow, so. And, and there's a changeover that has to happen, maybe an hour or so on each truck. So it's a big deal to say, hey, let's, let's shift this whole operation into snow. And, you know, sometimes you gamble on it, and you're like, eh, I think we're gonna be all right. And sometimes you, you say that, and then, and then it's like, we, and I woke up, and there was four inches of snow on the car. And I was like, great, that's not good. So it's all good. I, I'm over my time with it.
Well, Director Wilson came from the Columbus area, so he's got, again, his second year of his indoctrination into Northeast Ohio.
The lake effect is real.
And to be clear, when they looked at the radar, it didn't show that coming our way, so we, we got smacked.
We, we don't have palm trees here.
No.
No.
Every time I go to Columbus, I get to Mansfield, and it'd be like a whole nother world.
Whole different weather system.
Yeah, it's like, it's no snow.
For ourselves, really. Thank you.
Mr. Gelati.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. A couple things to update council on. One is a project we've talked about plenty of times. That's the Highland Valley View intersection, scheduled for construction in 2025. As you probably know, to widen the intersection, city does need to acquire some slivers of right-of-way from most of the properties near that intersection. We've hired a company called OR Colon to perform that service for us. They're gonna begin performing that right-of-way acquisition service in the immediately near future. I would just advise council that all communication between property owners or with property owners should go through OR Colon, just in case somehow you're approached by a property owner. Direct them to speak to OR Colon, or to myself, and if they speak to me, I'll be directing them to OR Colon. It's a, there's a legal procedure that needs to happen, so just want to let you guys know that's occurring. Other note, the State Route 8 Highland intersection, you'll remember from a few council meetings ago, you authorized us to send in a grant application for that project. We recently found out we're gonna be awarded that grant. It's in the amount of $2.2 million. So that's gonna become a real project, widening the intersection, adding turn lanes. It will also include adding a turn lane at South Bedford in Highland, which is a good thing. I know you like that. And also installing sidewalk on South Bedford from Highland up to about Blue Jay Trail to fill that sidewalk gap where there currently is none. So we're excited about that. Don't know yet exactly what year that construction will occur. We'll have to work with ODOT on that, but just want to let everyone know the good news. So that is coming.
Where is that sidewalk?
From, it's across the high school property, because there is a sidewalk opposite of Blue Jay.
Oh, okay.
From Blue Jay to the high school.
Basically in front of the high school.
Yeah, just the high school.
Yep.
Good job on the grant. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Chetik.
Thank you, Mayor. Some interesting news that we actually struck upon in the last week. I was running some budget numbers and getting some stuff prepared as we head forward in the year and try to close out and make sure we're hitting some of the objectives that we had. We already passed up our revenue total for 2022, so that was pretty exciting to see that we've already surpassed that, and we have two months of the year left to still continue to run programs and sell memberships. So it's pretty exciting to see how, how well the department's doing. Kudos to staff for all the work they're doing in increasing membership and also increasing our program usage. So really good job from them. Huge thanks to our parks crews and our service crews, and all the seasonals that are outside. Literally, they're outside. I almost want to say 24/7, but, you know, we let them go to sleep a little bit. But all they're doing is putting up, putting up the Christmas lights all the time, or blowing leaves. That's all they're doing in the parks right now, and they're really working their butts off out there to make sure we can have a great event on Saturday, December 2, from 6 to 8 in Longwood Park. You can all join us for Winter Fest, and you'll get to experience a lot of great things. Staff's been working really hard to set this up, both internally and externally in the building, planning, externally, obviously, the setup of all the lights. Literally, we're gonna have almost the whole park lit, and then the intent would be next year to have the entire park lit. So we're pretty excited about the progress we're making. We had, I think we had- We had, I think we had a five-year plan when we started. We're in year two of that plan and we're almost to the five-year part already. So we're pretty excited and kudos to, to the staff and what they're doing on that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Collins.
Thanks, Mayor. IT department's closed 31 help desk tickets. No major projects to touch on, just wanted to take an opportunity to thank the veterans. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodick.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you and council for all your support in moving forward with the demolition of these two homes. I see a lot of construction, but demolition is really cool, too. Speaking of new construction, we have issued 27 permits for new single-family dwellings this year. Not all of them are on Spruce Hill Crossings. We have a snattering of single families elsewhere, but we probably have not seen that number in one year since the Northwood subdivision. And I also wanted to bring, I don't know if anybody else caught it, over the weekend there was a, a nice spot on WKYC television, a news, a news brief on our Veterans Park, which is actually really, really kind of neat to see, and I'm sure they have a little, little spot of it on their website, but it really, it kind of highlighted all the, all the good parts of the park and it showed how it sits really well in our town center area. That's all I have.
Thank you. Director Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. HR continues to be very busy helping other departments. We wrapped up our 2023 health fair and it went very well. We're preparing for 2024 open enrollment for benefits and we ended up having a total donation for our breast cancer. Research was over $738.
Nice.
So, other than that, we're just busy. End of report.
And just to add to that, I think Director Smith is probably the busiest of anyone because she is also assuming the role of my assistant, who's out on leave right now, and I can't thank you enough for what you're doing. So she's working a lot of hard hours and it really means a lot to me, so thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Chesnick.
Thank you, Mayor. I am sitting in for Chief Ripley, who cannot be here. So what I have to offer is, the biggest thing is, Christmas is coming and Santa will be in the area, starting in chronological order, Saturday, December 9th, from 11:30 to 2:00 PM. You can visit Santa at our Sagamore Hills Fire Station at 11550 Valley View Road. The information that I'm telling you can be found in all of the, the social outlets. Then Santa will come and deliver gifts in Macedonia. That will be Monday, December 11th, Tuesday, December 12th, and Wednesday, December 13th.